Just so you know Tammy, I think on our end it's good to go.
I call this meeting to order at 4:01. Today is Monday, 16th of September 2019. As the staff take in a roll.
John Thompson.
Here.
Anne Warman.
Here.
Jerry Fugic.
Here.
Lloyd Sheldon.
Here.
Carlos Perez.
Here.
Robert Howard.
Here.
John Graver did email, he has an appointment, he was hoping to get back, he'll get here as soon as he can.
Okay, there we all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the attached agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I like the motion.
I second it.
Been approved, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed, motion carried. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes from our previous meeting?
Yes.
I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as printed.
I move that we approve the minutes from August 19th as printed.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion. Minutes are been approved. Public Communications.
We did receive an email that I didn't have an opportunity to forward to you, but I did place a copy in front of you today. It just so happens as it as, yeah, it just so happens that this email is very applicable to what we're doing with the Unified Development Code update. We have found that some of our code might be a little out of date and might have a struggle in allowing folks to enjoy their property that the way that they should. One of those is our accessory building building heights. Right now, the Yale Municipal Code states that the highest height of the building can be 16 feet for accessory buildings. And while that's fine for a normal car garage with today and the new motorhomes that we have and fifth wheels and so forth, you can't put those in a garage, a 16-foot peak, because it's a 10 or 12-foot door that they need to, that they go in and it really needs to be at least 14. So raising the accessory building height for, for those type of storage, I think would be applicable in keeping up time and that's what this request is here. We also have the property owner that is struggling with this right now. The property owner's here that come too. Do you want to say a few words?
Hi, I'm Dale Butcher. My wife Jolene and I just bought the two acres off of the Bakers and we kind of want to keep the property in the family. It was my wife's grandma's house and of course, we got a big trailer. So our plans were to build a nice 36 by 36 shop. And we would need at least a 23-foot top pitch to allow for the 14-foot doors and so forth. So our builder, he's the one who sent the letter and I just wanted to, you know, it's not a builder trying to say, oh, we need to do this, this, this. It's us as a family, just wanting to put a nice shop, keep the aesthetics, you know, in contrast with the rest of the neighborhood and so we just want to thank you and hopefully you can take us into consideration and we appreciate it. And thank you Tammy.
I'm, I'm very pleased with the timing of this. We've been discussing these issues and, and today is when we're going to be going through some of the building code revisions that we're proposing in the subcommittee meeting on that. So thank you for coming forward because.
Yeah, thank you guys. I guess the timing was perfect.
So what I would propose is that we now bring this in to the subcommittee reports on the Unified Development Code changes. And as we talk about that, talk about how we might address this. I've seen several other cities have different types of codes to address this. So we'll, we'll be able to come up with something during that time. What I have is I have Willsey's email and I see that you were CC'd on it. So what I'd like to do is keep you on that email string so that you know when we have, when this all comes together and goes into public meetings so that you have the opportunity to speak again in support of maybe what they come up with or if you don't think that what they, the planning commission comes up with, that you want something different, then that would be, this is the type of public interaction that we need.
Okay.
If that's fine, if that's okay with you, we're going to.
Absolutely, thank you.
You're welcome to stay and listen to the meeting. Don't feel pressured to leave, but don't, don't need to stay either.
Well, thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you Tammy.
Hi Joe.
Thank you.
That was perfect timing. It was, when, when we were looking at the code, we actually hit this with another person that had a 20-foot peak. And what our code says is accessory buildings are 16 feet at the, at the top of the peak. Top of the building. If you go to the building codes, it's very, I'll go ahead and shut the door. It's very clear that it's from grade to the top of the average roof line. And so at 16 feet, the top of your garage doors are at 10. And it just makes it impossible to get those in. If you think of some of the residential subdivisions that we have with such small lots, you're just never going to achieve that. But most subdivisions also have regulations of RV storage and what they can keep there. The lots are so small and the houses are so big, we're going to get into that in a little bit, that maybe that isn't, it's, it's not going to come into play where you have such tight quarters. But there are many places that have room for these types of garages. I think that really just to keep up with it, it would be something to consider. I know my, I don't think my trailer would fit in a 10-foot door. Okay?
Of course, the other thing too is if you have some of the newer vehicles that are pretty tall, that's the reason probably that why I switched brands was I needed to be able to fit in my garage. And I have eight-foot ceilings and if you look at all of the four-by-fours now, you have to have probably a 10-foot ceiling in the garage door to be able to get it through. So it makes sense. Okay. In public hearings.
It's scheduled.
Uh, okay, uh, for staff report on new or continuing items.
Along the continuing items are, the memo that I forwarded to you was just a brief synopsis of the subcommittee's meeting on possible changes to the Unified Development Code to help address affordable housing. I think the biggest, the biggest aha moment that we came up with was trying to come up with the definition of affordable housing. And to be clear and kind of what I said at the last meeting, we aren't here to provide low income or subsidized housing. So what we were looking at is how to find some ways that we might be able to get some additional density within the city. I need to apologize, I created a really cool map and I will forward it to you. Because what I did in the map was I took the apartments that we have in the city of Yelm, counted the number of units and then found out how many of those were low-income and subsidized. Forty-three percent of our available apartments are subsidized, low-income. So out of the, round up, out of the 400 units we have, over 250 of them are low-income and subsidized. So the need for more apartments is gone and there's a lot of folks out there that are kind of interested in some of those going. So along with that, the other item I found is that I took some R6 zoning, some R4 zoning, residential subdivisions in the R6 zone, residential subdivisions in the R4 zone, and then residential subdivisions in the R16 zone and found that the builders are not building to the full density allowed. In the R4 zone, they're building out at four units per acre. In the R6 zone, they're not achieving six units per acre. They're achieving more four and a half to five units per acre, if that. Some of them that were, they could have achieved 242 units, they only got 202 dwelling units in. In the R16 zone, it was even more so where they built at the R4 to R6, you know, four to six units per acre, when the zoning actually did allow for, at that time it was 14 units per acre. That comes into play as we, when we're getting into this a little bit, when we talk about ripple effects, because our, our capital facilities plans for water and sewer and streets and all of that is based on the full density buildout of the city. If our city isn't building out to its full, if we add additional density, is that creating more units than what we're planning for? If they're not building to the full density, then there's a lot of availability for additional density to come in because people, the, some of the subdivisions aren't built out to the full density. So having it kind of even out, so accessory dwelling units, having those two, an extra unit on each lot, may not be as bad of a ripple effect as we think it might be. So I want to kind of keep that in mind. I kind of jumped all over the place. What I was hoping is the subcommittee could kind of talk about what we, we talked about in our meeting where we came up with some of these ideas. And then I would hope that the planning, planning commission as a whole would discuss which way it would like us to move forward. Changes if any.
What I thought was most helpful was the definition of the affordable housing. And so I'd like to kind of remember to, most experienced person.
Thinking back August 22nd.
I can summarize if you want to.
Yeah, yeah, please do. Look, and I'm trying, trying to think about what we talked about.
What we did, and this was an eye-opener to me, is we looked at the market rate for the large square footage homes that are being built in most of the subdivision. And we also looked at the low-cost housing and the subsidized housing there. We said that there's a gap. That is, there is housing that one is looking for if you're looking for the market rate. It's in, going to estimate the numbers now again, but it's, it's in the 300 to 360,000 per dwelling. And, and that if you're coming out of the military or if you're in the military, you can get a loan to be able to do those for a family. And then there's the subsidized housing and the low-income housing, which is for apartments generally in the, in the range of what you might consider less than 100,000. So in that difference between 100 to 150,000 as the low end and 200 to 280,000 as the upper end, in that range, we've got a gap.
Yeah, I'm remembering now. So basically, here's what the market's saying right now. I'll use an example. I'm getting ready to list a one-bedroom, one-bath house in the Swallow Pines. 760 square feet. Market value says it's at $180,000 right now. The gap we have in the market right now in, in Yelm specifically is 200 to 260. If you ask me the, the medium range, the medium, that's about unheard of right now. Between 200 and 260 is about unheard of. A staff sergeant, he's six, looking to buy a home in Yelm, looking at 300 to 350, so.
What would it cost him in Tacoma?
Oh, 400.
400, so it's that much.
Yeah, yeah, and it's all about taxes too, in Pierce County and taxes. So it's getting pretty hard to find the homes, even from 260 to 300. I got a lady who works for one of the tribes in town. She wants that 260 to 300 in Yelm proper as well, it just doesn't exist.
And so for people that are, people that are fat, that are not military, people that are working, that have money, people that are retirees, that are looking for a place to downsize to, and first-time homeowners. There's not a way easily to get in.
There's a huge gap. You're right, there's a huge gap. So you're looking, I call the big six, service members are the number one person buying homes in Yelm. Number two, believe it or not, is seniors. And number three becomes families. Or you have empty nesters. Yeah, that's, yeah, yeah.
Are you getting people that are selling in King County and then buying a house here and pocketing the extra money, older people, or is, is there any flow like that moving now?
I've had seniors moving out of King County to Thurston County because the houses, you're right. So they come in with a bunch, with a bunch of cash flow and they're able to buy really nice homes for half the price in Thurston County than you're paying in King. And I've had three in the past seven, eight months actually do that. Great question.
I thought we had defined the affordable housing to include that range of housing between that 150 and the 250 or 300. And that, that was the definition that we were addressing as far as affordable housing and the groups of people that might have access to that funds.
You're right, that is a gap, I believe.
Yes.
Yeah, we're missing that.
And that's what we're trying to, in, in our definition of affordable housing is to try to address that and promote some growth in that area, or fulfillment of existing properties that are not at full density. And if I recall correctly, we had the seniors, median income families.
There you go.
New families.
Yes.
And then what we called.
Empty nesters.
That's the three groups of people.
You're right.
That we had addressed as being ones that we could target to try to get into.
So let me capture what he just said. So basically what we, what we, I'm remembering now, I'm glad you wrote that down because I'm clueless right now, but I got it. So what we said, the service members are taken care of, they're buying that, they're, they're out of, they're, they're in the upper range, the range that we're looking for is 150, 250 for seniors, median families and new families.
Yes.
Because that's where the income.
Called it the missing middle, we call it.
The missing middle, absolutely, the missing middle. The empty nesters have money, theoretically.
We also asked the question of why are the developers not building to satisfy that market?
Yes.
And what we found was that there are some gaps in our code that do not incent, right, we're incentivized.
Incentify.
The builders to build to that market. With some adjustments, we believe that we can provide incentives for builders to address things, types of dwellings such as attached dwellings as well as the small cluster cottage-type dwellings, where you're not having to build as much infrastructure for the dwellings to be all on the same, fed by the same street. And there, there are just a number of different ways that we can accommodate new dwellings in some of the zoned areas that we have. We started to discover in this map that Tammy pulled together. We talked about the map while we were all together in the subcommittee, that, that there's some areas where it's actually better and more effective to utilize the property to build more high-density dwelling units in that area. These are not apartments per se. There may be townhouses or there may be this cottage structure that builders can't, just can't even build the full, large square footage homes in some of the areas that we've.
I have a question Tammy. In how would, I mean, let me see if I can phrase this correctly. These incentives that we're proposing, would that incentivize the builders that have already built in these subdivisions to come back and fulfill their density, our density requirements or, or expectations?
I think that there is that possibility. And one thing that we talked about also in the meeting is the builders are going to build what's going to sell and make them the most money. So if they're building houses that are smaller square feet, they're not bringing in quite as much as they would building the houses that we're seeing now, the larger houses on the small lots, getting more square footage. I'm not sure how necessary, or how we can get the builders to build, you know, which may not fill their, I don't know how to word it right, may not fill their pocketbook as much unless we provide some incentives to provide those kind of different types of houses. There's a lot of ways to do that and may encourage them. And we have a lot on the books, but some of it is obscure. And some of it, it does, it's not clear what they can do to get that increase in housing or different types of housing. So I think as we talk about some of these, we can talk both. The other, the other thing that we talked about in our subcommittee meeting is what is the barriers that the developers might be hitting in order to achieve the range of housing? So it's not necessarily, you know, how can we get them to do it? But are, are, do we have anything in our code that, that prevents them from reaching the goal that we want? What I would say is we could kind of talk about what we have existing in the code and some areas that we could look at changing. And then at the very end, I have a couple additional items to think about. But the biggest thing and Anne brought up at the very first meeting when we started talking about this is our comprehensive plan has the goal in it that it states how to achieve affordable housing or ways to do that and the overall cost of home ownership. And it includes allowing accessory, accessory dwelling units. We do. A range of housing cost, which I don't want to get caught up in numbers as much as, as that, what, you know, the, the quote that we stole from the city of Olympia, that missing middle, because the numbers might go up and down as the market goes up and down. And then to consider density increase incentives to promote a range of housing costs. So we have the goals and support behind us. We found out through that meeting kind of what was missing. So if we want to jump into some of the specifics that we came up with. And the table that I have in the memo is just very short wording because otherwise it would have been more pages. But I tried to get some of the specifics, specifics in there. And one of those was, the first one that we talked about was density bonuses. Right now, we do not have a density bonus option in our code. Years ago, we did. When we changed the Unified Development Code in 2015, we used to have a density increase of 20% in the R6 zone and 25% in the R, that time is R14, but the R6, high-density zoning. And the way to get that density bonus was to have a planned residential development or a mixed-use development where there was something over and above a standard residential subdivision with square streets and, you know, fit as many in there. Maybe some addition, some opportunity to do something over and above on your landscaping. Or the mix of housing, having some single-family and some multifamily duplexes, townhouses in addition to, so they could get that density bonus. And so we were trying to figure out what the barrier was on that. And I think it's because it's a little obscure in the code that they don't know that it's available. And while I, in a pre-submission meeting, I chat with many people on what they might do with their properties, I don't necessarily get the residential subdivision builders that come in with their preliminary subdivisions at the start to see how they can get that. So with the density bonus, adding some density bonus back in might encourage that. And then also trying to make it more visible or more readily, what I'm trying to think of.
Advertise it.
Advertise it a little bit more, have some, it wasn't very clear in the code that there are opportunities for density bonuses if you provide a mix of housing.
Did I hear you say that the builders do not come in to talk to you?
Some do.
Is it, so it's not a requirement? Because if it were, then you would have the opportunity there to.
Well, yeah, and we have the opportunity to talk about it, but sometimes when they come in with a preset and say, here, this is what we want to build, you know, we can respond to that. But bringing in different options on how to achieve the full density is something that should, I should incorporate into the pre-submission meetings.
Yes, or, yes, or the fact that, be aware that you have, we have a low density, a high-density bonus that, you know, that you can have access to if whatever.
And then the other, the ripple effect on that one, I kind of already talked about in the map. In our existing residential developments, there are so many places where they're not meeting the maximum density that we planned for in our capital facilities planning. Then just without the full numbers and without the engineers talking about it, I'm, I'm thinking it might be a wash. So the 100 units that we didn't get in the R6 between two different developments, adding this density bonus of 20% or whatever you come up with, probably isn't going to sway those tables that much. So I think it's kind of a wash, it's kind of a, equals out.
When you say 20%, what are you talking about? 20% of what, of the cost?
No, of the density.
Oh, of the density.
Yeah, so if you have 10 acres at R4, you can do 40 units. But if you do a mix of housing types, you can get a 20% increase. So what is that?
I got you.
Another.
Understood.
Hey, my brain is not working, whatever. 20% of 40 is, you know, another four units, eight units. So, you know, maybe they do eight townhouses and then with their 40.
It seems like it's a worthwhile incentive that would provide more return on investment for a particular development, section, whatever they're working on. If they can add his eight additional. Seems like it's also worthwhile to do something like this as one of the recommendations. Not only keep it, but have it as something that's discussed. Said that there's a pre-submission meeting is held. If there's any way to. Said that there's a pre-submission meeting is held, and if there's any way to advertise it even before that, so that the builders, as they start to design what they're going to, recognize that there's some, some things that they've left on the table that they haven't realized were there.
And it, it may help when we're looking at changing the code, when it, in our R4 code, it says density, up to four units per acre. Maybe in that paragraph, it could have density bonus for planned residential or mixed-use development. And then right there, when they see, what is my maximum, what can I build out to, right in that very first paragraph tells them there is an opportunity. So not leaving it back in the planned residential development piece that they're not looking at, right in the zoning piece is where the, all the engineers and contractors and developers go to, is, what, how many houses can I build?
You put it in bold letters.
See, Tammy?
I mean, and is, land is the big cost, and you can do something like that, you sell that piece of property there, you're, you're making money because you're not having to buy the land.
And that was one of the discussions the subcommittee had too. What are the barriers to the, to the builders and developers? Some of it is well outside of our hands. The cost of land is really nothing we can control. Financing, financing is difficult once you get out of single-family homes. Once you get into apartments and commercial, financing is totally different for those developers. So that was a barrier. And then building costs. The cost of building and lumber for, for homes and everything else is just so volatile sometimes that, those are out of our control, but density is something that we need in our control.
You don't have the cottage concept too, they're just small jewelry boxes that you could put in, but they could fall.
We're not talking about tiny homes, but we're talking about just smaller homes.
Well, I've got an aptitude for amenity home, a three-bedroom is 1,100 square feet. Okay, that's, that's a smaller home, that's what they refer to as cottages now.
How many square feet?
1,100 for a three-bedroom. Four-bedroom is 1,200.
So it sounds like I can move forward and do some redlining in our zoning code for density bonuses in all of our residential zones.
What do you need from us to go ahead and do that?
Well, I would, if you have an idea of what type of, how much of a density bonus, 20%, 25%, what I would do is, what I will do when I leave here and when I'm looking at the code to start redlining it for you, would be to, let's look at what everybody, other people are doing and try to find the standard.
Yeah.
And what, is cost effective for the city?
True, I mean, are we, well, are we gonna, are we giving up, are we gaining taxes, tax revenues, or are we losing tax revenues by allowing a density bonus? I don't think we're gaining tax revenue.
It's, it's gaining tax revenue because our, our residential tax base is growing. It also is additional water supply connections, so it keeps that, those funds coming in to operate and maintain the system.
Well, I guess that's part of the assumption that we're making, that it's gonna kind of be a wash. At least for now. If you're not, don't have full, you're not at full density now, but then at some point in the future, you will. So what then is the cost after that?
I think there may be, I could be accused of having a Pollyanna attitude, but my view is that if it gets, that we bring density bonus, developers want to meet this, this missing middle, then there is a significant demand in that missing middle, that they'll not only have, we'll only have people coming to Yelm looking for those homes where it gets out, but we'll have developers recognizing that they've got a market because of the number of people looking. So it's...
I think also too, something to remember is, single-family housing does bring in a tax base, and it does pay water and sewer utilities, greens, and so forth. Money makers for a city are commercial and industrial use. That's where, you know, we, most of the BNO taxes and so forth are where the money comes in, in relation to what, what it is. So we want the housing because once you bring that housing in, your commercial follows. So when you have a big influx of residential growth, the commercial builders are saying, hey, look at Yelm, it's growing again, we gotta come, now we gotta come in. And that's, you've seen it over the years, you have a large residential growth, and then it kinda slows down as the commercial catches up. And then when the commercial catches up, then it just isn't up and down.
One feeds the other, yes.
Yeah. And so with the, with the slow years that we've had, and developers kind of worried about water rights and so forth, that has affected the commercial development because they don't wanna build if developers aren't going to come. So as soon as they see those subdivisions start coming in, and, you know, our population growing, then the commercial and industrial will follow. So yes, it's, it, new housing does increase.
One thing that I back to is that because of our comprehensive plan, we said, in the comprehensive plan, it says that Yelm wants to encourage affordable housing. And, and yeah, I'd like to hear from the others. It says, I mean, we're, we're now at the point of saying, okay, we're gonna actually do something about it. And there's, if you look at what's happening in King County, here's people having to move south to be able to find housing, and there's pressure on. What we started to find out was that there's, people actually, you can't go much further south and get a good, a better deal than you could in Yelm. And so...
Yeah, look at the traffic at five in the morning on Vail Road, bumper to bumper, heading north right now.
Okay, so just to sum, sum that back up, I'll go ahead and work out some density bonus, density bonuses in the zoning code for adding different types of housing, a variety of housing types. I'll come up with a percentage that's kinda standard around, and then we can come back and talk about specifics when we have what is, what is kinda standard in the area.
Would it vary from R4 to R16?
It could.
Maybe you wanna work with the same committee you had before?
Do that, once I get the redlines gone.
Well, something, something to consider, maybe think about, that 150,000 every year for the next 10 years, rejected real estate industry, you're gonna see a, a $150,000 home is gonna go up $10,000 a year, $10,000 before there's a market. Real estate shifts happen in 11, 15-year cycles. We're about four years to five years into this, this real estate run, at a 200,000, that's $14,000 a year. So in five years, that 200,000 home is now worth 270,000 dollars. 200,000 running at, 250,000 running at 17,000 dollars a year. So again, I, that's the big delta, the unknown, you know? Everyone has a plan, but in the end, the enemy gets the boat.
We'd still have a middle.
We would, it's just the middle shifted, the middle shifted, that's all I'm, that's all I'm, that's all I'm saying.
I mean, yeah, 'cause like, you know, I still buy a loaf of bread at $2.50 a loaf or whatever the hell it is out. You know, 25 cents, I used to buy a loaf of bread. But, you know, you're making a heck of a lot more money too, so it's kinda like, like you're saying, it shifts, you know?
It does, it's just something to be...
It kinda shifts, you think like, oh my God, my first house, I paid $7,800 for my first house. Oh, jeez.
Well, if we can kinda jump through a few more of these, I, I think what I'd like to do is, is we talk about it and, and I get some direction from you, then I can come redline the zoning code, if you want the subcommittee and me to go over that, or maybe we schedule a study session or a work session, as opposed to a regular meeting, where we can just talk it out and get into the down and dirty details of what the percentage is and what some of that would mean. If that's okay, kinda jump through some more of these. Access, the accessory dwelling units, right now, accessory dwelling units are allowed in all zones. We've talked about our residential subdivisions that are built out, that have the great big huge houses on little tiny lots, and there's just no room anywhere. Even if you had a tiny home or, or anything like that, there's probably not a lot of room for that. However, there's a lot of houses that could do an attached dwelling unit, mother-in-law apartment, above-the-garage type apartment. There are ways to get those accessory dwelling units on those parcels. One of the problems we have is, if you have a four-bedroom home in a residential subdivision, our step tanks are sized and always, the build, not always, most builders always stay at the four-bedroom, because once you go above, once you're five and above, you need a bigger step tank for our sewer system. So they make it a four-bedroom home, which maxes out our step system. But who's to say that if you had a four-bedroom home, you wouldn't have the same amount of family members as a five-bedroom home might? Adding a studio apartment or a mother-in-law apartment, is that one or two extra persons really going to put that much of a strain on the step tank? That's something I can't really answer. It's, if we wanna talk about maybe seeing if there's a way, if the ADU is attached to the single-family home or as part of the garage, do we think that the sewer department, do we think that standard 1,500 gallon tank will work? If they've got the smaller tanks, like we had in older days, 1,200 or 1,000 gallon step tank, probably not. But would the 1,500 gallon tank handle that? That's one of the items I, I think would be helpful for people if they wanna convert or add on to their house for an accessory dwelling unit. The other thing in that is, outside of the residential subdivisions and accessory dwelling units, talked about the central business district, which is the downtown core here, a lot of it is built out as residential. Many of those lots are larger than what you would find in the single-family residential subdivisions that we have. So if we could encourage maybe some accessory dwelling units in the, in the central business district for existing homes, maybe looking at reducing the setbacks in the backyard so that they could bring an accessory dwelling unit in, we could look at possibly only requiring one parking stall for an accessory dwelling unit instead of two for, required for, you know, a residential dwelling. Just ways to try to infill some of the areas that we have.
And how would you alert these existing dwellers of this new requirement or set of requirements? Or would it be...
Our opportunities.
Yes, opportunities. Or would it be for developers that come in and buy an existing property?
There's, hopefully, when we get to the point of having our draft updates, we will have an open house.
Oh.
And we will have a public hearing, and it'll be a public hearing before the city council as well. But if it does change, I would do a mailing to those specifically affected that you could, this is something new in the zoning. When we changed from R16 to central business district in our little square here, unchanged it all to central business district, every single one of those property owners got a letter notifying them of the zoning change. So it would be, whether it be a letter or a postcard or something saying, here's an opportunity for you.
Along with some of that, because we have to consider too, like your water meter fees to connect all that stuff up, so people, you know, are they gonna be on the same, for example, water meter versus, do they get their own water meter? Are they gonna share utilities? What if a piece of property doesn't have enough, enough room? You might be able to get mathematically a billing on there, but they may not have enough room to fit that septic tank, big or small. They may not have the room to meet the setback, to get that transfer line to go from point A to point B, to move the gray water for the step system. So although that's a cost factor that has to be looked at, you know, that's over and above the building envelope to actually build out a house. And all that pays, plays, plays a factor. I know, I don't build a lot in the city, I build an awful lot out in the county, and I mean, you know, we're dealing with wells and, you know, different circumstances. The one I have done in town, it was very critical, we didn't have a whole lot of room. So me, when you offer these accessory dwelling units and the density changes, it has to make sense so there is room for all of these things. Otherwise, you're just gonna offer it out there, and then all of a sudden, well, wait a minute, this is not gonna work.
And these are why we need these conversations, because something I didn't think about in our central business district, where the zoning made sense and the lot size made sense, many of those older homes are on shared tanks. So in order to bring an accessory dwelling unit in, that person would probably have to install a new tank, because you couldn't put a third home on a shared tank. So there is a lot to consider there. There's going to be, there's always going to be, it really depends on what's on the site.
Right.
If somebody's got a single-family home and they have a 1,500 gallon tank, and they add a one-bedroom or studio dwelling unit, accessory dwelling unit, is it gonna overtax what's there? If they're an old, old house and there's two houses sharing an old step tank, probably not. There's going to be that extenuating circumstance that it won't, won't work for them unless they want to upgrade their systems.
And that would all be spelled out, obviously, in whatever new...
It wouldn't be written specifically in the code, because it's a case-by-case basis.
Yeah.
I mean, if there's, if there's a five-bedroom home and it got permitted with the smaller tank, adding another bedroom and making it six, you know, that might be pushing it. There's a lot of houses out there, like I said, that were built years ago that have the smaller tanks. We have a standard 1,500 gallon tank right now, that wasn't the case in the past. So there are some houses in, in town that have a 1,200 or 1,000 gallon step tank that is not gonna be adequate for four or five or six bedrooms. So it's really gonna be on a case-by-case basis. I don't think it's, can be written in the code other than subject to, you know...
Location's a part of that though, I mean, just throwing this out, but an example is, if you've got a limited amount of space, you put in a 1,500 gallon tank, but now you got a parking issue. Now, we might have to convince that person, hey, you're gonna have to spend a couple thousand dollars just to have a reinforced lid so it'll carry, carry the weight of a vehicle, you know? I've been through those things.
You're right.
Those are all gonna factor in.
Yeah, I'm assuming all homes in the city are on the sewer system, but you have all these little island enclaves that every once in a while come into the city, so those would be currently on septic, right?
There's some homes that are on septic, some of the larger lots that have not been developed out, they're still on septic.
Yeah, because, see, my son lives in Newcastle, and in Newcastle, if you are on a, a septic system, you are not required to go on to the sewer system until the septic system fails. If you continually pump it out and you meet all the requirements. If at any point, system can't function, then they're required to do it. And I don't know, is that the way Yelm was, or did they have a mandatory hookup?
No. That's the way Yelm is. If you have an existing septic system and it fails or needs major maintenance, the county department of health would say, if city sewer is available, you need to connect, because they're not going to approve the new or large maintenance on an existing system. So it's considered sewers available if it's within 200 feet of your property line. So if it's 200 feet away and they say you don't have enough room for a new drain field, because now not only do you need a drain field, you need a reserve area for a drain field. If your lot isn't large enough for that and sewer is within 200 feet, it's the county that's going... that's going to not allow you to upgrade or put in a new sewer system. However, if those same properties develop, not the single-family home that's there that might have an issue with their septic, but they're going to develop and bring in more additional dwelling units, they need to bring it in. That's a development requirement. They have to do it. That's when you have to connect a sewer. Sometimes it's if you're developing, it's our requirement. If it's available and there's issues with your existing system, it's department of health might require that you connect city services.
This is the county you were talking about?
Yeah. There's a county department of health. They're the ones that regulate septic systems because we have a sewer system. So we don't permit them. We don't review them. We don't permit them. So anyway, there's, there's some more ADU questions that we have. It's nice to know that we already have the availability out there, but is there a way to encourage more? It looks like we have a couple of questions to work through on that. In our current zoning code, in our R16 zone, our high-density development, we have this interesting setback that your building can be 35 feet high, which is three stories. But if you're within 100 feet of a residential zone, a lower residential zone, then your building height can only be 25 feet. If you look at all of our R16 zoning that's left for development, it's surrounded by R6 or R4 zoning. So your buildings, if they're within 100 feet of that zone line, they can only be 25 feet. They're only going to be, be able to achieve the two-story, not the full three-story. That's a barrier that the developer might find in trying to get the maximum amount of apartments. So what I was considering is I think we should remove that barrier because a single-family residential subdivision, they're allowed to have a 35-foot house. Isn't it seem funny that you can have a three-story house at 35 feet, but the apartments can only be 25 feet? So I think making that equal might help the high-density zone.
It occurs to me though, not in real estate and I'm not a builder, but I've been seeing more multifamily dwellings that are in high-density, in cities that have the first level is either parking or it is commercial and then the rest of the, there's three floors of residential. Maybe I'm, I was just guessing that they were that much, but by us saying that it's, it's 35 feet, that mean that we're not allowing that type of commercial and residential?
Well, this right here, the 35 feet is for our high-density residential zone, which wouldn't be the commercial mix. In our commercial zones, we have a higher building height so that they could do bottom floor, commercial and residential. We could look at increasing in our commercial zones, if they achieve the bottom floor retail and density above, you can go up four stories if you make the first story retail or that mix of, of the commercial and residential.
This is, this is strictly residential, so it makes sense to do it the?
Something I just had a pre-submission meeting with a person that is looking at a commercial piece that wanted to do our commercial mixed-use development, have commercial out on the old highway and have residential in the back. He had this really, he found a really cool building plan for a four-story apartment, but in order to make the height, he needed to drop that bottom floor to be in the ground, you know, like basement type and then the windows are at ground level. And I don't know how feasible that is here because I'm not a builder and I don't know what we struggle with, like rocks and water tables and so forth. So increasing height in the commercial areas to be able to have the higher, more dense, or density in the multifamily as part of that mixed use might be something you want to look at too.
I think that's worthwhile.
There's a cost associated with that too. I'd say there would be a pretty good cost associated with that too, even though you go down in the ground because then that changes all your, your calculations, you know, plus there's a basement situation possibly. There's engineering, there's, there's a whole lot of things to look at and it does, it changes the whole cost element.
It'd be better to allow them to go up?
Yeah.
Another floor rather than have them to submerge.
Well, and then you'd have to make an ADA and everything else and then you, so then you, you know, it's, it's for every inch you go up, you go out of foot, all of a sudden you've got some pretty good-sized ramps.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I.
Parking reduction for multifamily. Parking, there's a couple of things. At first, one of the items we looked at was reducing the minimum parking requirements for multifamily dwellings, apartments. Right now it's two parking stalls per unit. So if you have a 100-unit apartment, such as the Tustin Apartments, I think it's 118, you're looking at 236 parking stalls. Well, that's huge. A lot of parking and what I read and all the things I was looking at and how to increase density within your city is when you're looking at high-density like that, you're looking at a sea of parking. A lot of times in the bigger cities, there are some areas in many cities, and I think Seattle's one of them, that they don't require any minimum parking for an apartment building in, in the downtown. But the big cities are served by transit and electric bikes and, you know, an Uber is the new thing, all of that. I think we're, we're still growing and maybe we're not quite there yet to have no parking required. But we could look at reducing parking if the apartments were built on main thoroughfares where the bus transit is. That would make sense. Another one I saw, and I think it was Lacy's parking code, they have parking ratios based on the number of bedrooms. So a studio or a one-bedroom apartment isn't, is going to have less people in it than a two-bedroom or three-bedroom overall on an average. So would it be feasible to maybe do a ratio of parking? In studio and one-bedroom units only need one, one stall per unit. And then once you get in the two or the one and two bedrooms, maybe they only need one and a half stalls because some people are going to have two, two cars and some people are only going to have one. And then in the two and three-bedroom or the higher bedroom wasn't requiring two. And I think, was it, did I give you kind of a option of how that would play out if they had 100 units at two per unit? That was 200 or?
200 cars.
Was it? 50 units would equal 100 stalls. But if you did that ratio of one, one and a half and two, those 50 units require 85 stalls. So it's another way to look at possibilities and if the people renting the apartments and, you know, there's on-street parking, there's other ways to try to deal with that.
What if they have an RV they want to park in there too? Their, their personal car vehicle's going to be, you know, parked somewhere else, taking away from that neighbor or person. Well, it's just.
Most ti, I would say most time, most times apartment complexes usually either provide RV parking off to the side or that's why you have the RV storage.
You don't allow RVs on the street, only for what, 72 hours or there's some limit, isn't there?
I think when we did the Habitat project that I was involved in, we did cottage design and the city of Olympia allowed it one and a half vehicles per unit. And it seemed to work.
Kind of.
I like your idea better than that.
What I, what I see is in housing, in our residential subdivisions, when I drive through, there's quite a few cars on the street, but sometimes the driveways are empty while there's cars on the street. So I'm thinking that it's a good wash, the way we have it with, we need. They are required to provide two parking stalls, which is usually the driveway. The driveway usually at 20 feet can hold two cars. If you, where was I going with that? Darn it. So, so for single-family dwellings, I see that, that working well. In apartments, if you've got, if you were looking at where they're located, is there on-street parking available to them? That works well. And then if they're on the transit, if there's over on Tohoma Boulevard, you've got good access to transit in the downtown, in our, anywhere in our commercial core, there's access to transit. When the loop is completed, there's going to be more transit available out here. So there's going to be lots of options for that. I'm kind of, I don't know that parking's an issue. The only time that I see parking is an issue is when you have those families that have four or five cars and are taking up the street and their driveway. But those are few compared to how many dwelling units we have and how many people are fighting for parking.
I like the idea that presented, which is the ratio parking approach that was used in Lacy. I think that that's, that would be something that worth considering in our, in our codes. Because if we are having people live right next to walking distance doors and transit, just like we were looking at purchasing in the middle, you have retirees and you have empty nesters. There are, there are people who would have fewer than five cars. The two people, say how many cars we have.
Don't ask. They don't want to see the one of us.
I know. You guys have a lot of cars.
I, I, I like the, the ratio that you presented. I think that is, and it actually goes to the builder who's doing the development and reduces their cost because they're not having to put basement blacktop to park cars or whatever. I think that's another way to enhance affordable housing.
Yeah, another thing we looked at, then I'll just move on as that's, sounds like we've got a consensus there, reduction in the standards for streets and building setbacks. One time or a couple of times I've heard that, well, the reason that the residential subdivisions are not meeting their maximum density is how much land is taken for roads and open space and parking, or roads, open space and setbacks for the houses. And when I did that calculation on my map, I kind of looked at the overall, what they had, they could have, they could have got more lots in. I don't know that necessarily the roads and open space is what's keeping them from getting their full density. But we have in our code, in the mixed-use development and our planned residential development, that if you do those unique housing types with a mix of housing, variety of housing and, or, or something special with the open space, that you can vary from our code. You can do smaller street. You can do zero lot line setbacks and build those townhouses to be able to achieve that higher density and the higher density and the bonus of what was in there before. We had a, somebody wanted to do that at one point, but fell into the recession and that project never moved forward. It was very interesting in how they laid out. They tried, they tried to incorporate that in and they did some really good in some areas and of that proposed development, the other wasn't as good. But bringing in a smaller, maybe one-way streets or houses up at the front of the street and parking in the alleys in the rear and not have to have on-street parking. Narrow, narrow your roads down and have walking as sidewalks out in the front, but parking in the alley in the rear. There's a lot of planned unit developments that have that. De Pont is, is a real good example. They have a lot of their units where the houses are right at the front and there's alleys and parking. That way you can change your streetscapes, you could change some of those setbacks, you could require that townhouses or cottage houses or sort of so forth have community front yards or not have as big a backyards. So trying to get that mix of housing, I don't, they, we already have in our code ways for them to get there. So I don't think changing our street standards or changing our building setbacks is going to make a difference.
Is anyone taking advantage of these regulations and why would that be?
So the time is because market rate is great big houses on little lots, more square Like I said, we used to have the density bonus and in the 18 years I've been here, only one person attempted it and then got hit with the recession. Again, I think this goes back to the density bonus notice in the zoning code and trying to encourage that type of addition or change in their housing through the pre-submission meeting is the way to try to say, hey, do you want to take advantage of these incentives? But they're already there. So what I guess what I'm saying is I don't think we need to change anything other than just making it clear that those options are in there and ways that they can achieve that density bonus if they do these things. So this is here basically to say, we already have it. Like the ADUs, we already have it, is how can we get them to use it?
I think last option, Gus, is a great one. That's really aimed at the empty nesters and seniors because it's people, I'm at a point at 53, I know I'm the youngest one up here, but I'm either all or none. Either I'm going to have three acres and mow it or I'm going to go live in a condo somewhere. It's, there's not going to be in the middle, it's going to be all or none. And, and I can just talk about my brother-in-law, same thing. He's had five acres for years, just sold it, bought a small lot, brand-new house. He's got a robot lawnmower now, doesn't even mow his yard. He's a robot and it goes. So I, those are, I think all five options are providing, are providing all the three groups we talked about in the middle because a young family can't afford the large homes. They want their own home. And the middle family that's not making as much as people on the big homes will still go to the smaller home, their kids still have their own bedrooms, they still have a place to fill, fill a wolf ball. I don't know if they play the wolf ball anymore, but you get them.
Right.
So I think they're all great options.
There's a new, pulled out, and I don't know if it's going to be impacted to the city. It has to do with impervious surface area versus pervious surface area. And just recently, you can go out and put up any kind of structure for the most part, your gutters and downspouts and splash blocks, vegetative path for, for your water dispersal, that's the total standard. That rule has changed. Now it came down here just a few months ago from ecology, I had to deal with it in two different separations in the county. What's happening is a structure that has an impervious surface area of 2,000 square feet and less, they can still use the gutter method, the downspouts and the splash block for the vegetation path for water dispersal coming off your roof line. But anything over that, now you have to put in a French drain system, entrenchment. You have to capture that stormwater coming off the roof line. Okay? It has to go to a catch basin for sedimentation to settle out and then you have to come from that and it has to go to, you know, designed drain field. Okay? And the reason I'm pointing that out is do what you want to do, some of that may be an impact, okay? Because we have to deal with stormwater drainage. It came to bear fruit, although I'm not in the county, but just to give you a brief background, house burnt down almost a year ago. I hope to move the family in here in about five, six weeks. One of the things they had to deal with to get their permit, we had to update because they had over 5,000 square foot, they took into consideration the roof line of the home, the driveways, all areas. Okay? Well, that cost, to make that all work, you also have to capture the surface water coming off the driveways. We had to tightline around the house, put a drainage. We had to tightline around the house, put a drainage system in, et cetera. And then you had to put a second drain on there to capture the roofwater so the downspouts can go. They all end up in the same entrenchment area. But the bottom line is, there was over $11,000 extra that we had to deal with plus permitting fees. So, that could be something that when we're trying to develop these lower densities and you want to invite the builders back in per se, you know, they got to look at all of that. Whether it's, you know, the square footage on an apartment or a single-family dwelling or whatever it may be. Where's, where's that water going to go? How do we deal with it?
I'm assuming that's one of the reasons that most of your single-family dwellings now are two-story. They're not building ranch style anymore because if you have 2,300 square feet, if you do two stories, you only got 1,100 square feet, 1,150 square feet of, of.
They also take into consideration like people with asphalt driveways or concrete driveways. That's all part of that.
Travel.
Isn't that part of the regulations, the rules and regs that we have now in the code for the city?
Yes, I'll check with our engineer.
I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there.
I know on the new, if there's something new that changed or if there's a new manual. Because we just, our stormwater regulations are that we use the most up-to-date, or most current COE manual. If that's changed, where that's going to come into effect is the stormwater treatment that the entire development has. What we've had to do, and in most cases, we've always had the roof drains go into individual drywells. Our drainage is so good. Roof water is considered clean water, so it didn't have to be treated before it went in the ground, but it was just dispersed. In Tohoma Terra, there's a little bit of a difference because there's a lot of clay up on the top of the hill and the water was not draining the way it does in the rest down here. So, what they did is they tightlined their roof drains to go out to the street and it went into the stormwater system that they have to build for all of their pervious surface, which takes into effect the streets and the driveways. So, when you have a residential subdivision, it takes all of those impervious surfaces into account. I don't know if it, if they have to account with roof drops now. Is that going to increase the overall size of the stormwater system? A little different when you have a full development and you're taking the stormwater runoff for 100 homes as opposed to one.
When I was in Olympia, we had to compute that, add up roof, everything for the pervious. We end up doing the pervious concrete. But, so I mean, it was, it's, it's coming this direction. Because that was, I think that was seven, eight years ago, I was.
Well, the last thing, I have a lot to move forward with. The last thing that I have is, as I was chatting with somebody else, other ways. What we talked about was ways to incentivize, incentivize developers and builders to create these additional houses, a variety of houses. There's also getting to the down and dirty about looking at requiring a higher minimum density. I'll use the R6 zone, for example. Right now, the minimum density is three units per acre, maximum is six. If they're only achieving three or four, then they're, how can we force them to achieve more density? That would be saying, that would require that we raise that minimum density up. If you have 10 acres, you're not going to do 30 houses. You're going to do 40 or 50 or six, you know, you're going to get 60 houses no matter what. So, you, we can look at getting stronger in our minimum requirements and acquiring that they build more homes.
It would still be an R6, but instead of allowing them to do three units per acre in an R6.
They do have to do four maybe or.
They do minimum of four or minimum of five, or if it's R6, you build six units per acre. Unless something prevents you from reaching that. Topography, wetlands, things, you know, there's going to be unique circumstances where you might not be able to reach it. But those are over and above your standard, so there would be exceptions. You could.
How, how would that differ though? I mean, what would be the trade-off between having density bonuses and density requirements? Would you forcing someone, trying to force someone to do this build-out as opposed to trying to incentivize them, I don't like that word, but to, to build out, would it have a negative impact trying to force?
Well, yes. And I'm going to use Cherry Meadows as an example. That's up on Killian Road and Collins Road. That is one of the subdivisions that was zoned R6. They could have gotten 242 units in there, but they only built 202. They were 40 short of what they could have built out. Would they have made smaller lots and reached the maximum density of six units per acre? Probably. If we force a developer to do that, will they stay in building town or will they look somewhere else? Because it's going to force them to build smaller homes.
But you have a double-edged sword. See, the problem is if builders are not building to the density, because of the Growth Management Act, you've got a boundary of this city. And so, if you're only building at 60%, you suddenly could have the city cannot have any more buildings in the city. Nobody can come here and yet you've got tons of empty space because you didn't fill the capacity of the Growth Management Act. But you can't get any more space because they say, well, you're zoned 16 here, you only built 10 homes here. That's your problem, city. We're not giving you, we're not expanding your growth. So, you, you have to, that's the catch-22. Could you be eventually forced to say, you've got to meet whatever the zoning is so the city doesn't find itself in that crunch where it runs out of space?
I think at this point, we're okay with the minimum maximums that we have. But that's kind of a different way to look at it. But if we, again, if we want to get forceful and we want to force the issue of providing this housing, there are other ways to achieve it, such as take, requiring a higher minimum density. Or in our high-density residential zoning, one of the samples I pulled up was behind Safeway. The housing back there on, I can't think of names. Some duplexes back there, but they're single-family. They didn't, they didn't meet the, the minimum density. So, in high-density zoning, if we want to protect that for high-density development, multifamily type of homes, not necessarily all apartments. They could be two, they're duplexes, fourplexes, eightplexes, they could be any range. But if we allow single-family homes in there and they meet the minimum density of eight units per acre, it might help get some of those. No, they're still going to build to what we're building now. Big houses on smaller lots at eight units per acre. Might be a little less of what we have in the six. It might provide some of the smaller homes, but you're losing the opportunity for 14 or 14 units per acre. So, do we want to allow single-family housing in the little bit of high-density zoning we have left?
That's one of the things that we do see and what we see is when you see the multifamily homes, they're all in one section, a whole bunch of them. And the single-family homes are, are in the next section over.
So, if you were to drive behind Safeway and saw the duplexes that are back there and the single-family homes on both sides, do you really believe that that's a high-density housing? I, it doesn't feel like it, it doesn't look like it.
If you want to, if you want to fill the missing middle gap.
Force.
Force some issues? Then, uh, let's see, add maximum lot coverage requirements to achieve sufficient room for ADUs. If we want to make sure that we have room for accessory dwelling units and we could reduce the maximum lot coverage, which we don't have any right now except for building setbacks. Building setbacks are our maximum lot coverage. You have a 25-foot backyard, five-foot side yard and 15-foot front yard. In doing so, there's really no room to have anything else on there. If we says, okay, only 40% or only 50% of your parcel can be covered with structures, that leaves enough room to build an ADU. Those are just some ideas of going over and above here. How can we, and set up, how can we help you? Here's some ways, maybe you can build something new if you want to. There's ways to say you will. And we have the opportunity to look at those as well. I'm not suggesting, I'm not saying that's my, it's just a way to go. And it's certainly something the city can do.
What about some kind of combination between the, of the two? Forcing that development and the bonuses? Is there somehow to, I'm, I'm a, I don't like government intervention stuff. I just don't like it. But, I mean, I understand and realize that it's a requirement, you've got to do it. Got to have law and order, I understand that. So, maybe, maybe it's something that has to be done, but it just seems anti, anti USA government to me. Forcing, forcing somebody to have that kind of, do required.
Do you watch the news lately?
What you're saying, if you own some property and it's on R16 and you want to put your house there, you'd either have to surround it by apartments in order to meet the requirement. But you're saying, maybe we shouldn't allow that. We should say that it's going to be R16, that it is a district that's going to have.
Yeah, that I, I, I agree with that.
And we don't have a ton of R16 zoning, high-density zoning, so we could look at the map and we could even look at possibly raising some density in some places too. Maybe, and maybe not in this round, maybe in our comp plan amendment would be a good place to look at changing zoning. But requiring the minimum density, I'm with you. I don't like somebody to tell me what I can and can't do on my property. I understand safety regulations and I understand environmental regulations. But telling me that I can't sell to somebody unless they're going to build six units per acre on my land, if they can't do five units per acre, that is a little different. But on the other hand, the Growth Management Act is the cities have to provide and plan for that density, that urban density. The county is protected so that those people that do want bigger yards and bigger houses and so forth, they can do that. But we have to plan for and provide that urban development. So, we have to remember that Yelm City Limits is city and we're not county-wide where you can have your choice of five units, you know, five, one unit per five acres or one unit per 10 acres or. So, we need to remember that, the little caveat that we are a city. We should be developing to city standards.
See, even in Cherry Meadows, if they had had a department that was to have it closer, say that the four to five in the R6, if they had taken a, a center portion of Cherry Meadows and put townhouses. That's all it takes. Always doing that and then you've more than met your requirement. So, it does, it would bring in that. I mean, I'm not the developer and I don't know what the return on investment is, but I, it's, instead of doing the cookie cutter approach that they're taking now, I think it is going to take a little bit of, have to do more.
Well, we, we have it now, we're just talking about increasing it, is what we're talking about.
I would want to understand, I don't know if we could even do that, but using Cherry Meadows again, because I do have some friends that live there. But it seemed to me if, if they were supposedly maxed out at 240 and they put the 202 in there, I would want to understand why they just went to, why wouldn't the developer back then want to max it out? Did he need room for the bioswales, the stormwater drainage? Why, why didn't they fit this other house in because if it pencils and it's profitable, you know, what's the trade-off?
It may have been more profitable to sell a bigger home than the cost.
Yeah, that's what we're saying, you know, the market. No, the market is the 300 square foot, or the 300,000, 3,000 square foot home. And in order to get that house, there, there's a subdivision at the end of Crystal Springs Boulevard that has 24 parcels in it. There's, I think, two houses, one new one and one old one that they refurbished. I've had several developers look at it and walk away because there's two small lots. And they don't want to build because their, their stock plans don't fit those two lots.
They have to be custom.
And so, I said, well, why don't you just build one house there then? And just over the lot lines. And then that way it would be as big, if not bigger than the others. Well, then I won't, then I don't get as many units.
Don't make as much money, you don't.
So, they've actually walked away because of the smaller lot. So, that's the other side of this. If we require you reach a six units per acre no matter what, they're either going to have to get creative and do the, that townhome or duplexes or are they going to walk away?
I just, I just can't imagine anybody during the economy where it's going, walk away. But they are walking away from current lots. But how do you get, how do you get a, just that slight shift? You had someone years ago before 2008, 2009, that did try to do some more creative.
They did, there was some environmental issues on that parcel that they had to get creative in trying to get the amount, as much density as they could. Again, it was right, right before that great recession and so they kind of fell out of the picture. I think there's, there's a lot of things to think about. I can, what I would suggest is that I make some edits to the code, redline our, our zoning code areas that we're talking about here and then get my map ready for you and maybe look at some options here, what this might mean. There's some little follow-up that I would need to talk to some of my peers in other cities. I can ask, you know, how, how are you addressing this? Does anybody have the maximum density and no minimum? Anybody have? And then I can also talk to the sewer department about adding an attached dwelling unit and keeping our existing septic. Then what I'd also like is either to have the subcommittee meet again or have a work session where we're not in the open public meeting, but we can sit and have the maps on the table and really patch some of these things out.
I would like, I have no problem with having a subcommittee meeting, but I would like his input and, and your input and stuff. So, maybe a study session would be more appropriate because.
And try to get John here.
Well, yeah, yeah, John would be good too.
Forty-five years in real estate.
Yeah, he knows, he knows the stuff, I know.
So, it's the consensus, it sounds like to me, is the study group.
I'd like to make sure that we address the, the Lacey as well. I don't know if this is specifically done, but called out there that dealt with the accessory buildings. But given that we're doing all the other work, we should address the accessory buildings to be 25-foot.
Consensus? There is a consensus.
Okay, so, we, I would like to get these code changes to council at the end of the year so we can start the year as a, I don't, not a comp plan amendment, but a development regulation amendment generally is done at the end of the year. You start the new year with the new code. I would like to push for that. We have October, November and December. We're trying, we would be having some open houses in there and a public hearing. And we also have IT coming in in November. They've asked to be on your agenda to bring in some information from intercity transit. So, what I'm hoping is can we have a study session for the next meeting?
Are you going to say tomorrow?
No problem.
No, I will, actually, I'm not in the office tomorrow, I'm traveling, so. And I don't have my phone. don't have my phone or my laptop with me, so.
The earlier, I think the sooner the better, Tammy, because before we know it, it's going to be December.
Right, over the next two weeks might be.
Yeah.
Do you want to shoot for that last week in September?
It'll be that, and so somewhere between the week of the 30th, you're looking at, so it goes 30th through, through the 4th of August, October, I mean.
I wouldn't be available.
Or the 23rd.
23rd through the 27th.
23rd through the 27th?
Of September.
September.
Next week.
Well, that's the next week.
Pretty close.
The other one would be that week after that is the 30th through the, September through October the 4th.
Did you say you're gone some of that time?
I'm not available.
At all, okay.
On that first week of October, no.
On that whole week.
Okay.
And then I'm going to be gone in December, so that's no problem.
So what about the week of the 5th, 4th? Whatever, what's that Monday?
The 7th of October. Tammy, you were talking about, there's a 30th through the 5th, and there's a 7th through the 12th.
7th through the 12th.
12th is a Saturday.
Okay, so if I put out some option, optional dates on that week, I want to be realistic in that I can get done what I promised you I'm going to get done, so that we have.
You have time yourself.
I have to have time to prepare some of the documents, so you can see what it looks like. If I throw out a couple of meeting dates there, do you want to do like 3 to 5? Is it better to go in the evening? It's, this is, this is a work session, so this is up to you, it does not have to be at 4:00 PM.
Well, that's works good, though.
Yeah, I'm, I'm available, oh, interesting.
The only date is the 8th, I have another meeting on the 8th.
Severely, so do I.
Oh.
And the 8th, I'm babysitting.
Okay, so the 8th is out.
8th is out.
7th is good.
7th is good, 9th is good, as long as we do it after 10:00 in the morning.
What day?
Monday or Wednesday, October 7th and October 9th, let's shoot for 3 to 5, I need to get to my calendar, just to make, it's not Wednesday afternoon, I have, well, no, it doesn't matter.
Well, I'm also available, the 10th and 11th, too, so.
I'm available anytime after that.
Just, I have the, I have the kids all night on the 8th, and then.
For a Wednesday that week.
Tuesday's my casino day, so.
Oh, gee. We all go with you.
If you bring money.
What if we just say Monday the 7th?
Yeah.
3 to 5:00 PM.
Okay, Monday the 7th, 3 to 5, sounds good.
Okay, and I will find out which room we'll be in, whether it be this room or back in the conference room, it just depends on meetings, I will have information prepared for you, some maps we can throw out on the table, and I will have some redlines for you on the zoning code with these proposed updates that you would like me to move forward with, and then on October, we might have some redlines to present to the public. Okay?
Sounds good.
All right, that's awesome.
You have a meeting report, Ann, from the park?
I needed to ask John about Holly, that's one of the things, we have a couple of people who have not been attending sessions, but basically, we've got very, very good news about the usage of the park, really positive feedback.
Oh, wonderful.
And all of the concerns were about getting accurate information on costs and the maintenance costs, because apparently there's a lot of misinformation going around in town. So there is accurate information on the website for the city, if anybody starts to get asked about the cost of the, cost of the park for the city, as well as for the maintenance of the park, it is on website under the parks and the budget. Apparently, there's a lot of discussion, not very good information will happen.
The other committee reports, the order, I would now entertain the motion that we adjourn.
I second the motion.
I entertain it, I don't, I can't.
I motion that we adjourn.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I had to give, on our legislative coalition, copy of, condensed of the Roberts Rules orders to realize, so that the all-new chairman cannot make a motion, and the only time that person can vote is if there is a tie.
That's right.
If one could be made a motion on one thing, and they're all unanimous, I said.